Meeting everybody.
Hey, Terry.
Mr. Mayor.
We're waiting for Bobby and trying to make sure that this is feeding to the YouTube channel and Facebook and on to TV even.
And then do at least stay.
Good evening, Bobby.
We ready? I think we're ready. All right, six o'clock, I'll call this meeting to order and turn it over to you, Mr. Ham.
Thank you, Mayor Short and members of council. Appreciate your willingness and ability to participate this evening. We'll get right to it. Our objectives this evening are to identify the key features of the recommended budget for fiscal year 2021, describe the city's current financial position at a summary level, establish a baseline for current for the current fiscal year and fiscal 2021 budget amendments that are necessitated by the coronavirus, and summarize the economic and budgetary challenge facing the organization to the best of our ability at the present time. The emergency orders enacted by the governor will no doubt have a deleterious of impact on local government revenues. Some revenues, especially meals, lodging, and sales tax, will likely drop immediately and potentially significantly. There's a real concern that at a national and even global level, a recession is in the making, which would affect revenues beyond those aforementioned meals, lodging, and sales tax for a longer term. Though the resulting practical relevance of the proposed budget is diminished, I think there is value in communicating and reviewing its underlying assumptions, forecasts, and objectives. Doing so, one, it reveals progress realized and anticipated on city councils recently stated goals and objectives, and two, provides a well-reasoned and dependable baseline or starting point for amendments, i.e. spending reductions that seem at this point unavoidable. So what's important to know about the submitted and recommended general fund budget? These are typically where, in my experience, elected officials want to begin. How much does it grow? It grows by approximately $1.4 million, which is 2.7% increase over the previous year or the current year. There are no recommended tax rate increases or increases to license or permit or fees generally in the general fund, and there are two recommended new positions which are funded by non-local revenues. What do I mean by the current environment relating to the COVID-19 and resulting socio-economic impacts? The timing of the current fiscal crisis could not be worse. In early March, we had just completed four months of work with the council and development of a recommended budget. Now, before we even have presented it, we realized that our revenue projections may be seriously flawed, but yet we do not know to what extent, what degree, nor do we have a reliable way of predicting the depth or duration of the current economic downturn. Of immediate concern are those revenue streams mentioned previously, most susceptible to economic fluctuation, the sales, use taxes, meals and lodging taxes, business and professional licenses, which make up nearly 20% of the general fund revenues. The long-term apprehension is that the economy will slip into recession negatively impacting revenues, typically insulated from economic fluctuation. Most succinctly put, it is not possible to know at this moment the magnitude of our problem or anticipate its duration. In that environment, the staff will acknowledge and, to a certain extent, develop contingencies for the most severe budgetary shortfalls, but do so without communicating an expectation that our fate lies within those worst-case scenarios. I don't want to fuel economic or social anxiety, though nor do I want to have understated a potential problem for the members of council. What's important to know about our ability to respond? First, Wayne's Borough's local government and its budget are focused on core and essential services. We have been in my service to the community and organization. I think Mr. Shaw has several illustrations that will highlight that fact. Second, Wayne's Borough's tax and fee rates tend to be below average. It's by comparison to other Commonwealth localities. We are affordable. We have the seventh lowest real estate rate and the sixth lowest personal property rate among the 37 incorporated cities in the Commonwealth. Our organization strikes an effective balance between efficiency and quality. This is a topic that we've covered in our previous retreats at which we generally agree that our organization is structured to provide the right amount of service, the right kinds of service, at a satisfactory level of quality. That's not to say we can't improve, but generally speaking, there's agreement between the staff and the elected body that our organization is structured and aimed at the right service levels. Four, the organization has been through an economic downturn and emerged leaner with valuable lessons learned. Five, we have accumulated reserves, some assigned to community investment currently that could be reassigned as a short-term measure. The recommended budget reflects the discussed prioritization of employee compensation over capital investment. Solutions, however, to our current economic crisis may require or prompt reprioritization of reserves to operating needs. These conditions form a solid basis with which to deal with near-term budget shortfalls, but not an enduring one. Our savings account will only go so far. There is, however, an opposite side to the lean and affordable coin. The organization's leanness, efficiency, and affordable price point mean that there are minimal, if any, opportunity for meaningful yet painless budget cuts to respond to an enduring shortfall. As a core service municipality, few, if any, programs, services, or departments would be commonly identified as obvious targets for reduction or elimination. If reliance on reserves cannot entirely get us to safe harbor, reduction of any helpful magnitude will impact programs and service levels. The aforementioned affordability of the organization is owed to the effort of our employees, and I am grateful to their loyalty and commitment in that regard. The health of the reserves is due in part, likely large part, to now-known below-market compensation rates and resulting attrition and vacancy. This experience, the budgetary coronavirus experience, will likely illustrate the inherent risk and overreliance on revenue streams that are so closely tied to economic fluctuations. So, Mr. Ham, what is the message? It seems fixed. Well, in fact, it is mixed. We are, I am concerned, and we all ought to be concerned, that we are losing revenue. We don't know yet how much, and we're not likely to know for how long immediately. But yet, I'm confident many of the staff were with the organization during the recession, and they bring with them experience in navigating difficult financial waters. We start from a healthy place, not super healthy, but healthy enough by some time as we assess the challenge we're facing. It's a complex situation. Unlike navigating the recession where we could fairly easily match expenditure reductions with known revenue reductions, we're fighting conflicting and often competing forces in this environment. The environment of the pandemic has produced these competing and conflicting forces in economics and services sustainability. Ordinarily, we're focused on core services. In a pandemic or emergency environment, the focus becomes essential services, water, utilities, public safety, public works, infrastructure, and facilities. In some cases, the governor's emergency order prohibit programs or service delivery, for example, programming in parks and recreation and library services. In this environment, we lose the ability to completely define essential, core, and necessary on our own. In this environment, some of those services probably are no longer considered essential. But I surely wouldn't want or choose to live in a community without them. My intention thus far has been to orient us to our situation and provide a foundation of information to move forward. I think it's important to note that while our focus this evening will be on the challenges and opportunities in specifically the local government organization, it's appropriate to acknowledge that our private sector, community organizations, face similar or more severe challenges. Also, I'd like to note that we know there are organizations and coalitions working collaboratively in the community to enhance and support and complement the government's response during this time. This time, I'd like to pass it along to Mr. Shaw, who will walk us through the elements of the recommended budget.
Thank you, Mr. Ham. I know a lot of us have been experimenting with Zoom lately, so I will give a couple of guidances just relative to Zoom for the council. As I work through the budget presentation, my intention is to provide a basic overview and with perhaps an eye towards how we might amend the budget as necessary. So if you have questions, I think it would be best to keep your microphones muted to avoid background noise. But if you have questions, if you look along the bottom of your screen there, you should have a menu bar and sort of right of center on that menu bar is a little icon that says reactions. And if you press that, you'll see that one of your options is to have a little raised hand. So if you have a question as we go along, hopefully, I'll be able to see your your hand raised and we'll, we can deal with questions as we go. If it doesn't work, just keep those questions in mind and we'll catch them at the end. As well, at the upper right hand of your screen, you'll see an option that says speaker view, and I think if you hit that, you'll see any presentations that I have, because I'm going to be working through a PowerPoint presentation and a little larger view. So hopefully this will work, as I'm sure many of you have been in some Zoom meetings recently, and it's still a little bit of an experiment for some of us. For folks who may be viewing this at home on YouTube or on the television, I'm going to be giving some of the broad overview of the budget numbers, but we have uploaded the entire city manager's recommended budget on the city's website, and that can be found under quick links. All right. So as Mr. Ham has noted, that this is a, perhaps unprecedented time to be trying to accomplish a budget review and adoption by city council. And yet, and I think as a nation, certainly as a state and a locality, we're going through an unprecedented time, at least in our lifetime experience. Nonetheless, I feel confident that the sorts of skills and knowledge that we have used to get us to this point in life will serve us well going forward. And so a lot of the same principles of good budget management, good budget practice, a lot of the policies that council adheres to, a fund balance policy and those types of things, are made just for these types of trying times. So I take some comfort in the fact that the sort of reason that gets us to where we are today and gets us through today will serve us well as we move forward. These were the priorities that council established during your fall budget retreat. You wanted to continue, as you had in a previous budget year, to address employee compensation, provide support to the Wayne's Borough Public School System, continue with your capital improvements program, maintain current levels of service, and improve communication within the, between the municipal organization and the community. And I think that the budget that we've prepared hits high marks on most of these points. The question that we're going to really have to grapple with are, will be, do these continue to be the council's priorities, or will priorities necessarily change because of the revenue environment that we find ourselves in, or because of the types of actions that will need necessarily be taken under executive orders of the governor or through the advice of the Virginia Department of Health or the CDC and so forth? And so as you, as we look forward and start to work through the budget review process, and certainly even probably as we move into the next budget year, we may have to continually reconsider our priorities. And I think asking ourselves, what is essential to the service delivery to the community and then the best interest of the community's health and welfare? And then, how do we view internal demands? That is, the demands to fund local services versus the external demands that come to the city. As you'll see, and as we work through the presentation, there are a goodly number of organizations that depend on the revenue that is generated by authority of the city council. As Mr. Ham notes, that this year's budget, FY21 proposed budget, stands at just over $53 million, and that represents about a 2.6% increase or $1.38 million over the previous year's budget. I'll go through some detail on how we get to that point, but I would just have the council note that there has been an upward trend, especially in the last several years, primarily owing to revenues that had to be generated to take on the debt service to fund the Wayne's Borough High School renovation. If you note sort of an odd blip, a peak in fiscal year 2015, that's caused by a bond refunding. We reissued bonds to seek a lower interest rate in, on those bonds in 2015. So it means you refunded the bonds that are outstanding, but then you immediately have to turn around and pay for new bonds. So it's, it shows as a, as a peak, but the net difference is actually some savings in bond or debt interest. It's difficult to summarize in just a, you know, with a few items, why a budget changes to the extent that it does in a fiscal year. If you consider that there are more than 200 lines from the city's chart of accounts that comprise the budget, and many of them are moving up and down incrementally, we'd like to try to summarize, what were the biggest things that changed? And I would say in this budget, the biggest changes really have to do with employee compensation and benefits, which account for about $810,000 or so of new expenditure. The first one, as we work down through this list, would be a $350,000 increase in the general fund, again, we're strictly speaking about the general fund here, which would implement the first two phases of the wage and compensation study that the council recently completed. And in those two phases, one is that we would be able to adopt the new job classification system and move everyone into their job class. In other words, if we adopt a new system, there are going to be people who fall outside of the minimum pay for their job range or their pay range. And so this moves everyone in and then brings everyone to within at least 10% of the market rate for that that job. So as you may recall, that one of the things that we accomplished with the wage compensation study was a market study to determine how far out of, from the market rate and, you know, among our comparison group are any particular jobs. And so this would bring everyone to within at least 10% of the market rate, and then pays for the benefits for those increase. As well, the Virginia retirement system is increasing the city's required match for contributions on employee pensions by about 1% or so. And there's an increase in health insurance, which, as we sit here today, is completely absorbed by the city. And a portion of that health insurance increase actually occurs in the current fiscal year, beginning, and it began in January, rather. And then we anticipate in the second half of next year, beginning January of 2021, there will be another increase in health insurance costs, and that amounts to about $240,000 in the general fund and is absorbed by the city. We've also allowed that there could be that 3% merit increase, and that increase is based on job performance. There have been, there has been an increase in detention and corrections costs. The city is, of course, a partner in the Middle River Regional Jail and Shenda Valley Juvenile Detention Center. Those costs increased by about $236,000 combined. School funding cost increases by about $730,000 this year. Now, a portion of that, 227, is actually carryover from the current fiscal year. As you may recall, there was a restatement of tax revenues from the prior fiscal year. And then $500,000 is actually new revenue that would be owed the school under a revenue sharing agreement. Department of Social Services programs, Virginia Public Assistance Act, and the Conference of Services Act amount for about a $260,000 increase. Debt service declines by about $103,000. We're retiring some debt from the original Wayne's Borough High School renovation. And then as well, at least as the budget is currently proposed, there is a decrease in the transfer to capital projects funds of about $700,000. A couple of major increases in city revenues. General property taxes increased by about $694,000, and the greatest portion of that being in personal property and motor vehicles tax. As you may be aware, the commissioner of revenue will adopt a new assessment method for motor vehicle tax this year that should provide some relief to individual motor vehicle owners. However, the overall value of both business personal property and then to a lesser extent, motor vehicles is increasing, the tax base itself is going up. Sales and use taxes are increasing by about $115,000. Again, the largest portion of that increase is projected as meals tax increase of about $90,000. The use of money, which is basically city investments and our banking interest is increasing by about $100,000. Of course, we've been doing well, but as you may well be aware, the, that was before the Fed dropped the interest rates to zero. And then the inter-fund transfers, and those are transfers that come for overhead cost from the various enterprise funds, the water funds, sewer funds, stormwater refuse funds that pay the general fund for overhead cost and things like administration, payroll services, human resource services, and so forth. And this number comes from a calculation that was recently done for the city by a third-party auditor that we do periodically to recalibrate the cost allocation plan. I might note at this point that, you know, that increase in meals tax is seeming less and less certain as is the increase in the use of money. We do have proposed increases in the enterprise fund rates that at present, there are no proposed increase in water rates, a 1.5% proposed increase in sewer rates, and this is based on the most current rate study that the council commissioned. The overall cost to the typical homeowner for this increase would be about $10 a year. We've proposed a stormwater utility fee increase from $3.96 per equivalent residential unit to $4.58 cents per equivalent residential unit per month. And the equivalent residential unit is basically the metric that we use to build the typical single-family home, and it equates to about 1,600 square feet of impervious surface. This increase would result in an increase to the typical homeowner of about $7.44 per year. Obviously, for commercial businesses who may have much greater impervious surface, the increase would be more. And then as well, we've proposed a $1 per month increase to the refuse collection fee from $14.50 to $15.50. Obviously, that's about a $12 increase per year, primarily to fund capital projects that will occur in the near future at the Augusta County Service Authorities landfill where we're a partner. And our idea would be that we would start to set aside some money in anticipation of those capital projects. The currently refused customers benefit greatly from the city's ownership in a landfill in that the tipping fees that would otherwise be paid by a commercial hauler are somewhat subsidized by the commercial haulers who do go to the landfill collecting refuse from Wayne's Borough. I might note that, you know, we put this budget together and really pretty well had it ready to go, except for production and printing several weeks ago before the coronavirus-related economic downturn started to settle in. And at that point in time, we thought we had a terrific budget. And so we recognize that maybe some of the proposals that we're making are less popular today. We are proposing two new positions in the city manager's budget. One would be a deputy clerk at the circuit court. And this would be reimbursed by the clerk of court from various court funds, that is, state compensation board funding or other revenues that are generated in the court. And then as well, we've proposed to have a part-time fire inspector that would work on the direction of the fire marshal. This would be funded through the state fire board. I think one of the things that we found is that is, in recent years, as we have professionalized the fire marshal's office, that that is the new, the new wave or the new trend really in fire safety is to, to focus on fire prevention as, as much as fire suppression. And so we are proposing, would recommend this part-time position. There were a number of positions that were requested by department directors that are not funded in the proposed budget, and among those And among those, you know, some are what I would consider perennial, that, you know, the six firefighters have been a proposal of the fire chief going back for a number of budgets now. Additional police officers and animal control officers, you've seen in previous budget requests. Office manager for emergency operations center to backfill a position that existed. And then as well, a proposal for marketing communication manager in the economic development office. Turn our attention then to somewhat of a conversation about where the city receives its revenue. And at present, about 80% of the money that we spend, we have to generate locally, that we do receive state funds of, you know, about 17% of our budget. A lot of those funds are come in the form of categorical aid. In other words, they can only be spent for the categories defined by the state. We receive money from the Virginia Department of Transportation's urban maintenance program. We receive money specifically for library operations. We receive money that's specific to, you know, support for police, law enforcement, and then constitutional officers. So those monies are earmarked, for the most part, they come from the Commonwealth. And then as well, the other sources of revenue tend to be generated internally. They are the transfers that come over that I mentioned earlier from the enterprise funds to the general fund. But otherwise, you know, the money that we spend, we have to generate locally, about 80% of the money we spend. We get a small amount of federal money, but. And as you start to look at those revenue sources, then we also give some thought to, well, if in the current downturn is even if it's short-term, how are those revenues impacted? If it's more long-term, what other avenues might be impacted? And as Mr. Hamp said, it's difficult because we don't really know the depth of the economic downturn at this point or its duration. And we won't have solid numbers to start to even examine that for at least a month or so, that the collection and receipts and then our accounting for meals tax is about a month behind. And then it's as well, the sales tax, which is a significant portion of revenue for the city, is about two months behind because those receipts are collected by the Commonwealth and then remitted to the city. But locally, we have to generate about $42 million to support the currently proposed budget. About $17 million comes from real estate and another $7 million or so from other property taxes. That's business, personal property, motor vehicles, machinery and tools. And then the interest and penalties on those taxes if they're not paid on time. And so that amounts, those general property taxes amount, you know, for about $24 million. That's the most stable revenue that you have in the short term. That if, you know, more pressing or long-term recession were to settle in, then ultimately those values can be affected as well. But in the near term, they're your most stable revenues. Sales account for about $5.5 million and meals account for about $5.1 million of your local revenues. The licenses that are associated with retailing account for about $1.2 million of the local revenue. Lodging is another $800,000. So we've already started to work through various scenarios and we're starting to get some guidance. There's already research being done by universities as to what the fiscal impact of the coronavirus economic shutdown might be. And we're following some of those guidelines. And the pictures are not rosy, that, for instance, we considered a scenario A where if you have a 10% drop in sales tax revenue, 50% drop in meals and lodging, and then a 20% drop in business license revenue, that's about $315,000 lost to the city coffers every month. And those are not insignificant dollars. In a worst case, or in a more dire scenario, if you had a 25% drop in sales, about a 75% drop in meals and lodging, and again, a 20% drop in business license, then the lost revenue to the city is more than half a million dollars in a month's time. And so something dramatic has to happen in order to be able to sustain operations in the face of that kind of revenue shock. So you start to think about, well, where do we spend our money? And then the budget is currently proposed. A fair amount of that money goes to what we would consider non-departmental expenditures. And I'll show you this in a little more detail in a moment. But that's, that's more than 40% of your revenue goes to things like schools and other outside agencies that really are not under the control of the city department heads. Then a little less than 40% of the city's revenue goes to wages and benefits and a lesser amount to operating expenditure. So as you look at this, this division, you know, this by category of where we spend, that really, you know, for the most part, what you have to adjust is about $30 million that you're, you have a $53 million budget. But really, what's under your more direct control is about $30 million of that budget. Because again, you have obligations to others outside of the city departments. So this slide is just a graphic to show, you know, what are the greater expenditures of, you know, the city's resources? And the single greatest expenditure, and it is the single greatest expenditure for most local governments and the Commonwealth, are schools. And so $15.8 million of the currently proposed budget would be devoted to the Waynesboro Public School System. They'd be sent to the school board. Another $3.6 million is devoted to debt service. So, and that's, you know, obviously an obligation you're tied to. Transfers to other funds include some of the items I talked about in an earlier slide. Your transfer to the Department of Social Services is about $2.4 million. And then we also transfer funds to the Office on Youth and the Animal Services Shelter out in Lenhurst, where we're partners in the regional agreement. Those are certainly much lesser dollars. And then whatever transfer is available for the capital improvements plan. Public Works looks big in this slide, you know, but a great deal of that money is actually fun, are funds that come from the urban maintenance program for streets maintenance. And so it's, it's pass-through money essentially to the public works department. And then, you know, some other big expenditures in the department include landfill post-closure activities at the old Waynesboro landfill off Winchester Avenue, which is a regulated project. The Department of Environmental Quality controls that project essentially. Then you start to look at jails or, what we show is detention and corrections in detention is another $1.8 million. Again, that's operated in cooperation with Augusta County and Stanton. Both those facilities are, you know, we have regional agreements to fund. So really, you start looking around again and saying, well, where do you start to cut money? And, you know, you look to police and fire, which are big. The police department costs about $6 million a year. The fire department, a little less than $3 million. But is that really where any of us want to cut, especially during a pandemic? And, you know, during a period of time when we know we most need the services of those employees. The library costs the city a little more than $1 million a year. Some of that is funded by the Commonwealth. And then parks and rec cost about $2 million a year. One of the things that you can do is go to everybody and start saying, well, I need a 5% spending reduction plan or I need a 10% spending reduction plan. But sometimes that ends up being a bit uneven because the, the 5% or 10% that you take from a small department doesn't really amount to much relative to what you're taking from a larger department and the impact that it could have on, in either case. No easy answer. In terms of changes in expenditure, just broadly stated that wages and benefit, as I noted before, is the greatest single increase in the budget as proposed. Mr. Dr. Hostetter, did you have a question?
Yeah, Jim, I did, actually it was a couple of slides ago. You were talking about the tax revenues and the, and I'd have to look back, which one, there was one of them, the sales tax was up. You talked about meals and lodging. Did that come under the other local taxes? Or which pie piece was that in?
Okay, so the, actually, the meals tax, we projected about a $90,000 increase. It is other local taxes, sales taxes in that category as well. If you're looking at this pie chart, other things in that, other local sales and use would be things like we get taxes from energy consumption, electrical consumption, gas consumption, things of that nature. And business licenses are included in that category. And they, that with various types of businesses, whether it's retail or professional services, warehousing, transportation, those types of
Right, but it's the next slide that I wasn't sure.
So that, and if you're looking at this chart, the meals tax is included in that. And the meals tax was, is currently predicted to increase. But I think we realize that that's probably not going to happen at this point and may well decline. And then sales tax remained fairly even.
Okay, it's actually the next slide that I was asking about. That one there, is it under miscellaneous local taxes where meals and lodging come in?
Correct, yes.
That was just unclear to me, so that's all I needed. Thank you.
So as I was saying, that the, you know, at this point, the biggest increase in expenditures in the proposed budget are in wages and benefits. And to some extent, because the department heads responding in part to the council directive and in part to their belief that improving worker compensation in the city is important and did a number of things to try to either reduce or keep their operating expenditures the same. And then as well, there are some increases in those wages and benefits that are things that are outside of our control. The Virginia retirement system is increases required on the city's share. And then our decision to absorb health insurance and cost increases. I'm going to move to the enterprise funds unless there are any questions at this point relative to the, to the general fund.
Jim, just one question relative to, to wages is in this factoring in the 3% pay raise, could you tell me, what quarter were you all envisioning that to, to take effect?
That would be for half a year. That would come into effect during the third quarter or beginning of January, both the adjustment to wages based on the wage and compensation study, phase one and phase two of the comp study, as well as the 3% merit raise increase.
Okay, thank you very much.
As I noted earlier, that we have proposed based on the current rate study, an increase of about 1.5% on sewer consumption and base fees. That equates to about a $10 change for the average user over the course of a year, about $1.74. We base this on a family that uses about 10,000 gallons of water on a bi-monthly bill. And so that's, which is kind of a typical usage. As you may recall, the council commissioned a rate study several years ago that basically looked to ensure the financial stability of the enterprise, the water and sewer enterprises by looking at operating cost, debt service, and continuing capital improvements required in those areas. And then having a rates, a five-year rate schedule. And we also took into account affordability, both in the, within the city as a comparison to average household income and then as well within the region more generally. So the, the, some of the, I think, benefit of adhering to a rate schedule is that the council has, is that you have an incremental increase, perhaps in many years, sometimes most years, but you don't have big leaps in rate increases to try to catch up. And I know we've been through periods where we felt like it was difficult to increase water or sewer rates. And then when a rate increase came, it was on the order of magnitude of 15% or more, which is obviously, I think, more difficult for the typical household to absorb. I don't want to go through all of these numbers, obviously. We can certainly review these in more detail if it's your pleasure. But I did want to make a couple of points because, you know, as you start to think through it in a, at this particular time or any time, what's essential, what's an essential service of the city? Then you, you have to put water up there near the top, if not the top. And so what our water department does, what you, the water enterprise accomplishes is basically running a water treatment facility and then delivering that water to about 8,500 connections. And those are both households and businesses. The treatment plan itself came online, oh gosh, about 10 years ago now. And it was a $12 million facility and still really is recognized as a state-of-the-art facility. We receive our water, pump water from two wells and a freshwater spring. And we have to maintain about 130 miles of distribution lines throughout the city. And so the water department is self-sustaining. That is that the fees that a customer pays for, for water sustain the, the department. And it costs about $4.2 million a year. Some of the notable changes, I think, in, in this year, as in the general fund, have to do with wages and compensation. One thing I would note relative to revenues is that we've actually seen in a downward trend in water consumption. And we suspect that some of that may be due to the fact that in recent years, we've had enough period of time where so many appliances and so many household fixtures, everything from showerheads to toilets to dishwashers and washing machines are being made to be energy efficient. And so as homeowners replace those items and as new homes come online, you would expect that there would be some reduction in consumption. You may also be aware that in recent years, we've been through an aggressive meter replacement program and that now all of our meters actually transmit their readings to a radio read system, can be downloaded and analyzed. And as we've gone through that, we certainly find some things we find anomalous in our readings. And we are not sure, and we're working through this right now with consultants to determine why we have sometimes what we would call apparent water losses that are not going through meters. And that can be any number of things. It can be large leaks, it can be, you know, water that's being stolen from the system. You'd lose, anytime you have a fire, a large fire can, you know, you can lose hundreds of thousands of gallons of water in one fire event. So we're working through that right now to figure some of those things out. But it, as I say, I think if you look at sort of the bigger issues in the water fund as we sit today, you know, you do see an increase in salaries. And I think there's some, we continue to replace meters aggressively. But the, there's a slight reduction in But the it there's a slight reduction in retained earnings this year, but the retained earnings of the fund tend to be healthy. The sewer fund, if you look at the revenues in the sewer fund, you see sort of that same downward trend in sewer charges, which are related to lower meter readings. It's a greater number in the sewer fund because sewer rates are higher. So even though it, you know, what happens is that we base your that your sewage fee, your consumption fee on your the water meter. But that so if you, you know, if you use 100 gallons of water, the 100 gallons of sewer use is higher than the water use. So you see a bigger reduction in service charges and sewer for the same phenomenon. The sewer fund operates the sewage treatment plant and then all of the collection lines throughout the city, pump stations and so forth. And we we basically have a plant that's able to accommodate about 6 million gallons of wastewater a day. We typically only collect about two and a half, but we have 125 miles sewer main line and eight lift stations and about 2,800 manholes. We talked briefly about the increase, proposed increase fee and stormwater rates. And as you may recall from conversations that we had this time last year, we wanted to move all of the existing stormwater related capital improvement debt into the stormwater fund. But that would create about a 30% increase in the stormwater fund. So we proposed to break that over two budget cycles. And as well, this helps provide funding for small capital projects, what we might consider maintenance projects in the fund. I think one of the things that that I would want to note with the stormwater fund is that really the city's approach to stormwater management and how we utilize funds in in stormwater in stormwater department were affected by the city's designation in 2013 as an MS4 community. And what that is is basically a federal designation that says that we have to manage the discharge from all of our stormwater outlets and get and we basically operate under a national permit to do that. And so you shift, you know, pretty quickly from a capital burden that is trying to improve the stormwater system to reduce recurrent flooding throughout the community to one of regulation and how do you address the mandates of the federal government to improve the water quality that's discharged from the stormwater system. And in 2016, we adopted a fee schedule to help support that effort. And finally, with the refuse fund, the fund stays relatively the same this year. Little change in expenditures. However, we have it proposed that there would be a rate increase in order to begin to or to continue to set aside money for what we know to be a looming capital expenditure at the Augusta County Service Authority landfill. And as you're aware, we're a partner with the service authority in the city of Stanton and that landfill operation. When they open and close cells, that is create more space for dumping the refuse trash that comes to the landfill, it's quite expensive and we've known for some time that there would be an opening and closing in the near future. It's still several years out. The city has been setting some money aside for that. But we felt like the it would be something worthwhile to begin to collect additional funds for that so that we don't end up in a situation where the general fund would have to make a contribution to that activity. So the the rate for the for refuse collection, the city hasn't increased since 2008. And I think you're aware that based on the lot last solid waste management study that was done, we still have the the lowest rate among, you know, haulers in the city that the city does allow commercial trash collection in the city and that at present, we're the the lowest rate. But to some extent, that's because we have a reduction in what would otherwise be tipping fees that there is a reduction that's made on our operating expenditures at the landfill for waste that we bring in. But it's not the kind of revenue that's generated from by the commercial haulers. And so I think this would be a way of leveling the playing field a little bit and also setting aside money for that expansion. This rate increase wouldn't include any revenue to offset cost for post closure activities at the Waynesboro landfill here off of Winchester Avenue. And with that, those conclude my remarks. I'd be glad to answer questions that anybody may have from what you've heard so far. I know that's probably a fair amount of information to take in and a and probably not the most exciting format. And if, but I'm glad to answer any questions that the that the council might have at this point. If not, I'm if not, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. McCormick and who's going to walk us a little bit through the capital improvement plan for the year coming up and some issues related to fund balance, some summary of where we are with fund balance. I should have in the earlier part of my presentation given Mr. McCormick the lion's share of credit for the budget that we've produced while all of the departments submit budgets to a budget committee comprised of Mr. McCormick, his assistant, Elisa King, Mr. Hamp and I, that I think this year, especially because of how busy Mr. Hamp and I have been with other duties related to coronavirus in the last month or so. Mr. McCormick and Ms. King really had to take on more work than than was probably fair to produce the budget that that you've received. So did want to give Cameron that credit. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. McCormick.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Excuse me. Can everybody see my screen in the CIP fund that should be included in the budget document that you all received? One thing that I did update over in this area. I believe all of these said park projects or maybe two or three of the four said park projects. I updated the two Greenway projects to reflect as much. And thank you to Mr. Shaw and a big thank you to Ms. King, who was instrumental in getting the document put together and getting all getting a lot of the figures done related to staffing to help us out and to help keep us clean so that we can continue to work on the CIP and things like that. So just as a reminder, the CIP plan presented in the city manager's budget focuses on cursed core services, continuing projects that have been deemed as critical or projects that have a significant or entire grant match. So starting from the left to the right, the schedule identifies what department is identified with the project, what the funding source, what the funding sources is or are, whether it's grant local, all local. Then it identifies whether we have an outlay or a reserve. Outlay or reserve just means are we planning on the funds going out and expending them this year? Are we planning on building a reserve for a future project? Then there's a brief description of the project. An estimated cost on the project and then a comprehensive plan reference. And that should be included with all of the projects here for 2021. So a quick rundown of each of the projects. The first one is the $300,000 for the take home vehicle program. It allows for five new vehicles at approximately $60,000 apiece and it is entirely locally funded. The second project is setting up a reserve for fire truck replacement. If you'll remember in the 2020 CIP, the city funded a new ladder truck. In addition to the ladder, we have six other apparatuses that should be on a replacement schedule. This will reserve will this reserve will allow for us to begin planning for those future replacements. And this line is also completely locally funded. Third and fourth project are the Middle River Regional Jail debt payment. And then the continuing to the fund, the reserve we set up in the prior year. The purpose of the reserve is to be able to pay and continue funding the current debt payment once the money for the Rockingham and Harrisonburg buy-in ceases. Next project is the South River Preserve. This project is completely grant funded as part of the NRDA grant monies. And then next we have two Greenway projects. You have Phase 2B, which is already ongoing and then Phase 4, which we should know prior to adoption of this budget, whether the funds for that project have been awarded by the state and both of those projects we share in with the state. It's approximately 80%, 20% grant match on those two projects. Next project is the Loft Springs Natural Area. And it's also funded by the NRDA settlement. And then wrapping up the fuck the park section, we have funding for more HVAC units at the Gorge Gorsuch. It allows us to stay and continue with our regular placement schedule. So hopefully we don't end up with unplanned HVAC maintenance at the Gorsuch in a year. First two lines under the public works section are to fund a street bridge in Culver as well as the main Delphine Roundabout. So we currently have an application in for VDOT revenue sharing that should complete the funding for a street. We already have partial funding for that project and would fund the main Delphine Roundabout. We should know again about those, hopefully by the close of this fiscal year and both of those funded, both of those projects are funded half locally and half through VDOT's revenue sharing program. The next line is to can you continue to fund the second Southern Corridor payment? Our first payment will be about $675,000 and it will come to really any time now. And that was appropriated during the 2020 CIP process. The second payment will be approximately 1.5 million. During the CIP process last year, we funded about $215,000 of that. And that or yeah, we funded about 215. And then if you couple it with the amount here, it would bring the total to the reserve up to about 810. We would think that payment would come due sometime in around 2022 and it'll be about $1.5 million. And all of the match there, that's just the match portion that's that's shown there. And that's all locally funded. Then the next project that you have is an IT project, which is replacing all the storage, all storage and data and replacing the space where all our virtual servers live. It'll provide enough capacity for us to do our next munis upgrade, which we're doing munis upgrades every two, one, two, three years pretty frequently, but average on about two years. And that's coming in the next upgrades coming in 2021. The IT director has identified this as a critical, it's critical to information technology structure and it is also locally funded. And then the next two projects are economic development in nature. The first is to do some environmental studies on the property that we own near Berry Plastic Plastics. And then the second is to start a reserve for our share of the Natural History Museum. The museum reserve listed there will cover substantial portion of the cash outlay we'll need for the project. That's got a in-kind match as well. That's the land that's that the museum will be placed on. And both of those funds, both of those lines are locally funded. And then the bottom of the product, the brought the bottom shows you the revenue sources. So you the phase 2B matches with the face to be here, so on to total down to the total uses needed, which should match the total sources used to come to a balanced CIP. And so one of the things that we started working on pretty quickly, once we realized how much of a fiscal impact this could have is what projects do we have under our control? And so we started to look at the capital investment and hopefully accumulate some cash for supportive operational expenses in there and if necessary. And so we reviewed the 2019 CAFR to see what was available potential potential sources identified are shown in the left column here. And these are the sources of your 2019 CAFR that are available for council and for their use in one way or another. So then we went and we broke down which each one of these sources. So for example, the restricted public works turns into a Southern Corridor Reserve and then some street maintenance. And then the way that that happens as we've talked about, I believe at the past meeting was we had some money appropriated in the CIP fund that we moved to fund. Yes, you're welcome, Bobby. Do you guys needed any smaller or bigger to be able to see? Or can you go? Can you all see this pretty well? I can zoom in a little bit more if need be. Okay, so we moved some money out of the Sunset Park Reserve that was all locally funded last year to support the Florence Avenue Bridge. And so that freed up some of the restricted public works that would have had to have been spent on street maintenance regardless. So this money becomes money that's free to be it. It basically becomes unassigned at that point and you can choose to move it back into your CIP fund for another project or let it fall into unassigned. And so we went through each of the each of the categories and basically labeled it and brown is money from the prior year that has already been spent or appropriated or it's about to be appropriated and the money wouldn't be easily accessible. And then we have yellow where the money was used to fund a reserve replenishment, ongoing project or a project starting in the next two fiscal years that we have a matching responsibility and that money is likely inaccessible. This point would lead to having low levels of reserves, defaulting on a grant or stopping a critical project. And then the green or is money to fund a project, but that we are locally funding the project and can speed up or slow down timeframes. That money is going to be your most accessible and could be used to provide some buffer as we attempt to meet the challenge in front of us. One place I would like to point out and go a little bit, a little bit more detail is the CIP plan here at the section. Basically, to fund your CIP plan this year, it costs about 1.8 million dollars, which is these two lines combined. And then you had some money from some capital projects, funds, reserves that went into it as well. So as we went through the CIP, we kind of tried to identify what we could speed up and what we could slow down. And what that boils down to is basically what are we completely funding and what do we have a partner in? So this is the same CIP plan as provided before with a funded or unfunded column added in order to achieve the $2.1 million in flexibility noted on the fund balance summary, we'd have to slow down a number of the projects shown in the CIP plan. And our hope would be that by slowing spending on these items, it can prevent any type of negative variance being shown in the CAFR for the next year. Once the CAFR has been completed, you would evaluate what is on assigned fund balance at the time and then begin to fund these projects once again. And it should be noted that if you were to, if you were to have to take this approach and use some of your prior year prior year unassigned fund balance to to give you some buffer for your current year operations. It's going to slow you, obviously, your 2021 capital plan down. And then your 2022 as well, because we depend heavily on our unassigned rollover from year to year to fund our capital plan. And then the final slide that I have is just a summary of your reserves as of July 1st, 2019. And then we rolled it forward so that we could estimate their value, what the value would be at June 30th, 2020. We started with the balance per the CAFR as of July 1. And then we had a few small uses. We used the minor maintenance to we had a police vehicle that was totaled and the insurance replaced at cost. And so we had to put some money with it to make sure that we could fully fund the the new vehicle. And then the Rosenwall Gym Project, it came in a little bit over the estimated bid. And so we coupled some money with the minor maintenance reserve with that in the CIP fund. And then you have your additions, which come to you have your formula addition. If you, if you'll recall, we have our C or our fund balance policy, it's 16% of the next year's budget. Currently, our 2021 budget is 53,63,899, 16% is the multiplier. And the balance should come out to 8,490. So if you couple that with what's in our committed contingency already, that should get you to your total required per the policy. We have a revenue stabilization, which we've made no changes to thus far. Landfill closure, no changes to the minor maintenance. We've funded it through some reserve replenishments up here on the previous on the previous slide. There's 21,000 here to fund the minor maintenance and 10,000 there to fund the major. To come up with a total reserve balance of 10.1 million. And then just a quick refresher on what each of your reserves are for, your council contingency safety net reserve. It's designed its function as operating cash for your organization so that you can function on a day-to-day basis. So you can cut checks and make payroll. There's a lot of local governments that have to go get a tax anticipation note or a revenue anticipation note. This is what keeps you from having to do that. Because you always have enough in the bank, because of your cyclical nature of receiving funds, you always have enough in the bank to cover to cover your ongoing operating expenditures. The appropriate uses, if you had to use it, would be a natural disaster, unseen infrastructure damage, imposition of federal state mandates, court decisions, and then any acts of terrorism. It's not to be used in economic slowdown or recession. The revenue stabilization, which is here is for general economic slowdown, but shall not be used to finance recurring expenditures. So if you had to use it, you probably want to go find things that were non-recurring in your budget to fund with that money. Landfill closure reserve is for the upcoming cell that need to be created, created at the Augusta County Service Authority. The minor maintenance reserve, it's a small reserve that sits in the general fund to fund small unanticipated expenditures, like the match with the insurance that we needed. And then the major maintenance is to fund large items in your CIP plan that are either coming slightly over budget or bid slightly over budget. Or it could be used to fund a large capital repair, like for example, if you couldn't fund your HVAC units for a year and you had one that actually went, you could go use that reserve. The trick to all those reserves, though, is your, your first goal with your next year's unassigned fund balance or unencumbered fund balance is to restart to refill those reserves. That is all I have on the fund balance and the CIP plan. And I'll be happy to take any questions, or I'm sure Mr. Shaw or Mr. Hamp would be happy to field any as well.
So I had a question, Cameron. Thank you for putting all that together. You mentioned the, the museum, natural history, five hundred thousand dollars on the, that slide. But then you sort of said also payment in kind with the land. So was that incorporated into that five hundred thousand dollars? Was that the proposed monetary contribution?
So that's, I'm sorry. So just, just so you guys know, because we have three laptops in the room, we get some feedback. So we're trying to control the questions coming in. So if it takes a second for us to be able to pick you up, or if you get some feedback when we start to talk, that's why you're getting feedback from somebody else's computer that's in here. So the five hundred thousand dollars that's there, that's just the cash piece, the in-kind piece. I think we feel like our total contribution for that's going to be about a million dollars, is that what we're thinking? And so that would fund five hundred and the land value would fund another piece of that. And you'd probably have to put a little bit more at some point with that five hundred to fund it completely.
Okay, that's what I thought I just wanted to make clear, because it sort of ran together for me. Thank you.
Other questions? I think it just might be helpful, thank y'all for, for the presentation. Regarding the Southern Corridor Reserve and that pending payment in the upcoming fiscal year, it'd be helpful, I think, maybe explore a deferment on that payment, recognizing that it's, I don't know what the percentage of completion is, but it might be something worthwhile to, to, just if we, if we needed that resource to source weather storm and something to explore. Second thing that was the deferment of the Commerce and Industrial Park Environmental Work. I just wondered if you could explore about, rather than flat out deferring, maybe explain that a little bit more.
You may be aware that the city still owns property behind where Berry Plastics is in the target area. It's that fronts the interstate, and that's simply money to do initial environmental surveys for wetlands and those kinds of things. So it doesn't, you know, move it much beyond, you know, the environmental work that would need to be done in advance of engineering work.
I know there'd been some conversation about a six-month budget and wanted maybe talk a little bit about that. I mean, I think my primary interest would be, and I think by my colleagues on council, I imagine, would be, hope for the best, assume the worst. And what are, what are things that, opportunities that we may create now to create some deferment and capacity within the operating budget until we get better information? Because I think we're all very anxious. I know like my, I've got a certain degree of anxiety over where that sits over the next six months.
Right. We have been exploring that, and we look at it through, from several angles. One would be legal ramifications, that there are things about appropriations and appropriations to school systems that are guided by, you know, the, some Virginia Code guidance. And then as well, there are implications in some of the agreements that we have with external partners as to, you know, our contracts, when are, when are we bound to pay? There's the same thing with debt service, all those kinds of things. And then as well, we look at just practical issues. And I think our, our belief at this point is that while we had thought there might be some initial advantage, I don't think they're great enough to overcome some of the obstacles that go into formulating a six-month budget. Part of it are just practical things that have to do with the fact that our both expenditures and revenues are quite cyclical. And so we would have to reconstruct the budget based on some of those cycles. And it could be that you'd come back to council, for instance, to change due dates on tax receipts and things like that. But there would just be a fair amount of work that goes into trying to figure out those cycles. When you would say your time is maybe better spent trying to understand your initial appropriation and then when and how to amend it. So there, and then as well, we put, put ourselves in a situation where basically the finance department would be trying to create a new budget at the same time you're trying to complete an audit on the existing fiscal year. And so you end up with a real disconnect, you know, and that. And then finally, I think just for the departments, that it takes the departments about two months to put their initial budget together. And then, once it's sent to the budget committee, it takes another couple of months, almost three months to bring it to council. And so the, I think those timeframes would be reduced, but it gives you some idea of the, the effort that goes into creating, you know, a budget. And so I, I think at the end of the day, we look at it and say, well, we do believe that before we start to do things that are very dramatic, we would like to have a little more information, but we also look at it and say, some of these things are going to be inevitable. I think that, you know, we look at it today and we realize that in this, the current fiscal year, you're going to have shortfalls and certainly in, in big revenues producers like meals and perhaps a lesser extent in sales. Whether those things stretch into next year or not, they affect the ability to get ready for certain things that do occur in the next fiscal year. So in other words, the time that you would normally be putting into planning for and preparing for opening a swimming pool or the time that you are, you know, are going to be preparing for something like your extravaganza really has to occur in the current fiscal year. And we may be looking at where we are in May and say, it just doesn't make sense to, to make those plans for early in the summer. So as I say, I think we had hoped there would be some advantage to six-year, or I'm sorry, six-month budget. But the more we examine it, I think the more challenging we find the proposition. And we say, to what useful end? I mean, what are you really accomplishing? And that you can't accomplish with a budget amendment. Cameron, did you want to speak to that in any more detail? Or Jordan, if you had thoughts on that?
I would just add that the state code requires the city to pass a budget for the fiscal year.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
I can, yes, sir.
I reckon my question, so I can understand it better. Would we be better off to reduce our budget that we're proposing for next year? And then if we end up better than what we anticipate we might be, we can add that money in and add the projects on as we go? Or should we shoot high and then have to cut it as we find out if we have to reduce the cost of the amount of income revenue we have? Which is, which is the easiest way forward.
I think at this point, we've, we've gone both, we've thought both things. One is that we realize that we already have to start reducing the current fiscal year's budget. So we're already, you know, as you're aware, we've furloughed some employees. We've, you know, directed departments to begin to reduce expenditures for the remaining fiscal year. So we're already beginning to take some of those steps, and we could carry those into next year. Again, I don't, I feel like it's a little premature to do something that might be considered draconian or dramatic until we at least see, you know, what March, maybe part of April looks like. But I, I would maybe defer to Mr. Bowman or McCormick that if we advertise a budget at fifty-three million dollars, is it easier to reduce that budget number? Or if you advertise a budget for, say, you know, forty-eight million or forty-five million dollars, is it easier to increase that budget?
So, and I'll get Jordan ahead of on this, but if you advertise, you can't go up, you can only go down on a, on an amendment at the time of, after you hold your public hearing?
An amendment to increase the budget by more than one percent requires a public hearing and some procedural requirements. Whereas an amendment to decrease the budget doesn't have those same requirements. So you can do it either way, but it's easier to decrease than it is to increase.
That's what I needed to hear. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, head, head shaking, it's like the Brady Bunch over here. Well, you know, Mike and Jim and everyone, thank y'all so much for, for pulling this together this evening. Very helpful, a lot of information to consider and adjust. And certainly appreciate the overview this evening and forward to the conversation over the next couple of weeks and, and hope conditions improve here quickly.
Amen. I, I guess I would just note before we wrap up that we had been scheduled to have a budget work session on April 15th and then to have a public hearing on the 27th. I'm sure the council wants some time to, to absorb the information that you've been given. We've sent digital copies of the budget to all the council. Last week, we do have hard copy, if you prefer to work with that, available. They, I'll again say for anyone listening in that there are copies, or you can download a copy of the city manager's proposed budget from our website under the quick links. But I suppose we, we would look for some direction as to whether you want to organize the work session on the 15th. And I'm assuming that we will stick with the 27th for required public hearings.
What's the, in terms of the public hearings, what is the, what's the minimum, the latest day to do those public hearings? Is it, is it the twenties? Is that the last day that we have to do it and relate or meet the advertisement schedule?
I don't believe so. I think that you could push it to the first, your first regular business meeting in May, which would be the, the second Monday in May. I don't have the calendar. Cameron or Jordan, if that's not correct. Yeah, so that would be May the 11th. You could push your public hearing to that. And you have to have a public hearing for the utility fee changes and the budget itself.
I mean, that would add additional five.
You do have a tax rate public hearing, even though we don't propose a change in the tax rate.
I would just offer, that would add an additional five weeks to see how this thing shakes out. That could help inform and, and ideally help, help the public sort of disseminate and reflect on the information that we're receiving and what we can or cannot do. I would just offer that as an idea.
I would note that the school budget is supposed, under the state code, the school budget is supposed to be approved by May 15. And there is supposed to be a gap of seven days after the public hearing prior to the approval of that budget. So I, I think the public hearing ought to be before May 8.
Do you all want to work on some dates then? Maybe circuit, circuit, but I mean, I, the reason I'm just thinking is that it affords more, to the extent that we can, provide more opportunity to reflect and see, see what the numbers shake out as.
Terry, are you asking for who to look at the dates?
Staff. I look like they have sidebar going on over there with the. So Jim, were you, were you all?
We were just talking about that when we would expect to receive some numbers on meal's tax, that comes to us sooner. So we're collecting, you collect March's receipts, obviously, in April. And that's usually towards the end of the month, maybe around the 20th, by the time we reconcile our bank. And then you're about forty-five days off, though, on sales tax, because that, again, is, is remitted to the state and then sent back to us. And so you're mid-May, May 15th or so, before we see March's sales tax numbers.
Maybe it's time also to just talk about what does the public meeting look like in the midst of a pandemic? How do we schedule that? How do we, how do we figure that out?
Mr. Bowman, maybe you could help us with that?
Sure. The city has passed a, an ordinance that's commonly being referred to as a continuity of government ordinance. And that authorizes the city to hold a public hearing in non-traditional ways by submittal of written comments and other methods as opposed to having everyone attend a public hearing in a room like they normally would. So assuming there's no significant change in the COVID-19 condition and, and that it's still recommended that there not be an assembly of persons, my recommendation would be that the city take advantage of those options that you've given yourselves and hold the public hearing by providing the public with information on how they can submit comments on the, on the budget and tax rates and, and those items. And then those would be received by council at the public hearing. That would be an electronic meeting like this. A lot of localities are reading them aloud, receiving them ahead of time and then reading them aloud during the public comment period. But there are different ways to do that, but you, that's what you'd be looking at.
We were talking about that. It sounds like maybe sticking with the April date would be better if we are trying to get things wrapped up. I think Mr. Bowman discussed the, by the eighth, so we have the calendar time to get the school budget passed. Is there use in, when we said the 15th was the next scheduled work meeting, will we have any more information that's just next week?
I really wouldn't expect that we would have revenue information by next week. I really wouldn't expect that we would have revenue information by next week. Then I'm not sure. Looking over at Cameron here. What additional work we would would really be doing. I think as of we, as mentioned, we've already begun some austerity measures here, and I think. You know, we turn our attention pretty quickly at the staff level to working on that. In, you know, and then we're looking to the council, I guess, to understand what. Questions you have, concerns you have. I know this is. But puts us all in an awfully difficult situation as Mr. Hamp said at the outset, it's the worst possible time. And that we've completed a budget, ready to send it, thought we had a good budget. And now we realize that it's probably going to be a flawed budget, and yet we don't have any data. To to really guide us and and. Revision. I think anything that we're doing is somewhat speculative. So I think it's it's more a matter of, at this point, is there something that the council would hope to accomplish?
I guess my thought would be it would be nice. To have another working meeting at some point prior to the. Public hearing so that we can sort of review where we're at and share what we've come up with in the interim. Again, you know, this is efficient to be able to do something like this, and it may not need to last. As long as this evening has, if it's a matter of sort of. Update and clarification and maybe some discussion of new ideas. But I think it probably would be useful to do that before the actual public hearing.
So when when will the? The Mills tax information come in? Oh, you're muted.
On or about April twentieth?
So how about? How about we move the twenty our our regular meeting that we were planned for the twenty seventh? And have that so that we'll have at least the Mills data in. And it's it's not great, but it is the money that. We're gonna we're gonna know our local impact here pretty heavily, I think, on the twenty seventh, at least what we rely on for a good part of our budget. And then. You know, the the. And then the following week, the sixth or seventh of May or whatever. To get to that seven day window that Jordan was talking about. Just an idea.
Sounds like probably the best thing we can do, Mayor.
Jordan, is the advertising it's ten days, right, for all those ordinances?
Notice of the budget public hearing. Is a newspaper ad published seven days in advance of the hearing. So if I understood what Mr. Short was saying. It was contemplated that the hearing might be on April twenty seventh. And so we would just need to run that ad on or before April twentieth.
Well, I was actually saying that we would have a a council work session on the twenty seventh.
I understand.
Yeah, and then run the ad on the thirtieth for a meeting on May seventh.
That would comply with the state code.
Does that sound good to everybody?
I don't have another device. It's got a calendar on it. Remind me the days of the week.
Monday, the twenty seventh for a work session. Advertising on the thirtieth of April. And then the public hearing on May the seventh, Thursday, May seventh.
That works for me.
I'm good with it.
Wonderful. Got thumbs up over there from Bobby. And and Jeannie. Thank you, Jeannie.
Okay, well, that's that's what we'll plan on then, so that we will have a work session. Do you want to do that at six o'clock in the evening on the Monday, the twenty seventh?
Does that seem to work for everyone? Thumbs up.
And then we will have public hearing for the budget, tax rate. Utility fees on May the seventh, which is a Thursday. And what time do you want to have that? We normally have. Meetings at seven, I you know, it's obviously for the convenience of the public.
Do we want to stick it's stick with seven? So we to. We typically do that again, I think, to accommodate. Citizens' schedules and getting home from work and dinner. So seven o'clock. All right, anything else?
On the twenty seventh, we're doing the work session. Is it also a council meeting that night, or is it just going to be the work session?
I think Mike's doing a side.
We have a couple of land use things to wrap up. That that. That's a Mr. Hamp has just prompted me. We do have. At least a subdivision making its way through the review process that I think would have been scheduled for public hearing. On the twenty seventh. And then there's a conditional use permit. As well. So. If if it would be acceptable to the council, you know, perhaps we could deal with. Both of those. Is that too much for your agenda? How do you feel about that?
I think that's I think that's fine, particularly if we get a six o'clock start, right, everyone?
Okay.
And you all, we'll leave it to you all as to. Which one first? So.
Okay.
Meeting and then work session leave it up to you.
Very good.
Okay. Well, again, thanks so much. This was a look how far we've come. With. From recorded YouTube to streaming live. So very much appreciate. Everyone's support, Dennis, particularly to and his crew to to get this working this evening. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Have a great night.
Good night.